Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our special Blue Lake City Council meeting of November 2nd, 2021, Tuesday. And some people are here via Zoom, so we will accommodate them. We'll start with our pledge of allegiance. Please join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Will you establish a form of the council? Mandy?
Yes, Mayor Jones here, Mayor Proten Doherty here, Councilmember Curran.
Here.
Councilmember Reed.
Here.
Councilmember Hogan here.
Thank you. Okay. Approval of the agenda. Is there anyone from council that would like to move anything around in the agenda? See, no one. And anyone from audience that's here for a particular reason? No moving of the agenda. Okay, we need an approval of the agenda as delivered.
So.
Summer Doherty moves, checked by Chris Curran, to approve the agenda as delivered. Any further discussion from council? Discussion from audience? Back to council for the vote, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it passes unanimously. Public comment: The public is invited to present petitions, make announcements, or provide other information to the city council that is relevant to the scope of authority of the city of Blue Lake. Not on the agenda. The council may provide up to 15 minutes for this public. To assure that each individual presentation is heard, the council may uniformly impose time limitations of three minutes to each individual presentation. The public will be given the opportunity to address items that are on the agenda at the time the council takes up each specific agenda item. And we have timekeeper here. Is there anyone from audience that would like to be part of our public participation?
Yes.
Oh, hello, sir. Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Scott Fraser, 737 Blue Lake. And I also have rental property on Redwood Avenue. It's related to, but different than what you have in your agenda tonight for your resolution. You may recall that back in February and March, we had discussions about the ozone Taylorway properties and what those things might become. And at that time, a number of citizens, including myself, asked that you not approve any exclusive negotiating agreement, but rather hold a workshop-style format to discuss what the city's vision is and what the project is before negotiating a specific project. I'd like to revisit that request. I request that you consider having a public workshop format to discuss what would become of the Taylorway properties before negotiating a specific project. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Fraser. Okay. We are now on, oh, is there any other public comment? From the audience via Zoom? All right, we're now on item for resolution number 1191. A resolution of the city council declaring certain city-owned properties as surplus land in accordance with the requirements set forth in the Surplus Land Act action item. And Mandy, did you want to go ahead and give us a little bit more detail? As you know, the city is considering selling or leasing certain city-owned properties so that the properties can be developed consistent with the city's general plan. The city recently entered into exclusive negotiating agreement for the sale or lease of one of the city's properties.
Yeah, so this resolution being brought before the council to maintain compliance with the State of California Surplus Land Act. It's an act that was just updated in April of 2021 and establishes a process and a requirement for all cities in the state of California to provide notification to potential interested developers of affordable housing that a city has properties that could potentially be considered for development. So this will be a process that the city goes through each year for any property that we have, that we are either considering for development or that we have that is sitting undeveloped. So whether the city has a property that we would like to look at for a bike park or a courtyard building or a new city facility or economic development, we have to make this notification through the state that the city does have these properties and they have to be considered first for affordable housing development. So this is the state basically coming in and saying that they're very serious about housing development and that they are requiring that cities go through this process in order to make sure that this is being considered. So this is a process that we need to go through. It allowed, the Surplus Land Act allows the city to sell or lease property. It doesn't mandate that you do either, but it does mandate and require that you consider proposals. It doesn't mean that you have to move forward with a project, but it means that you do have to consider it and negotiate if something does come forward for consideration. So this is kind of a formality, but it also provides some exposure to the city for other developers that may be in the state of California that are looking at doing projects, that may be interested in doing something in Blue Lake that maybe they hadn't considered in the past. So it's an opportunity for us to, you know, get our, our properties some exposure, but also can move forward through a process that's mandated by the state.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from council on the site?
I think that the new, the revised resolution captures all of our comments from our last council meeting. And just what we had agreed upon, that would, you know, the revisions would be made before we move forward. It captured what we discussed.
And I, we did find, Summer did find a section that I missed lease in reference to a sale. So the revised resolution that's there adds the term lease under yeah, for second. Second page, first sentence to a proposed sale or lease of the property.
And to just let the community know that we've gone through a lot of processes through the years. We've had town halls. We've looked at our district. We've changed it from an industrial park to a business park to now a district, which opens it up to multi-users, including residential. And then two, we have the state of California coming on to us saying, you must provide low-income housing for people. If you don't start doing something, we will take over your city and we will do it for you. So what we're doing is we're being very proactive with this, saying, we want to look at what we want. We want to decide what is right for the city of Blue Lake. We've directed our staff to go forward and look for projects that are right for this city, not for LA or San Francisco or somewhere else, just for Blue Lake. So this has been a very thoughtful process. This is nothing new. It's gone through the planning commission. It's gone through many years of discussion to say, what can we do? We want to maintain control of our city, but we also want to provide housing for the people that need it, that is being mandated by us, to us to have. Anyway, that's kind of my little speech about this. If anyone else wants to jump in, feel free.
I think we covered it on the last one. And it, I think it was really clear, though, to, to be clear that this does not obligate us to accept or act upon any proposal that's presented to the city.
Absolutely, yeah. It doesn't bind us in any way. It's just, like I said at the last meeting, a hoop that you have to jump through to make the, the land available. And this happens oftentimes with resolutions. There are certain hoops you have to jump to get where you need to go. Any other questions or comments from council?
Do you have a hand from Elise?
Okay, I was going to go to the audience next. All right, so out to public. Elise, I see your hand.
Change to the unmuted.
Do you have that bigger ability?
Hello, sorry about the wait there. I was having technical difficulties.
No problem.
So I would like to say yes in support of the request from the public gentleman whose name I didn't catch about having, you know, more, more public input. I think that a lot of people feel a bit threatened by this process and feel that, you know, it's possible that things could go in a direction that we don't, you know, a lot of us don't want to see. So I know that it's been explained in the past that there would be an opportunity for public input if something were proposed, if or when or whatever. But I, and I know stuff has happened in the past, but again, I'd just like to speak in support of having more of that. And I'm also have a question regarding the exclusive negotiation issue. So I don't, I'm not exactly certain what that means. And so I'd like for that to be explained a little bit and also making this it kind of, I mean, the idea that once this, if this proposal is approved, then the property could be made available to a larger audience of potential investors or builders. So how does that, how does that correlate with this exclusive negotiation? What is, what does that actually mean?
Did you want to answer that?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So at the time that the city entered into the exclusive negotiating agreement with Danco, the Surplus Lands Act hadn't fully been processed and brought to our attention. So there were some changes to the act that were adopted in April of 2021. The exclusive negotiating agreement that the city entered into with Danco basically is just an opportunity to have detailed discussions on potential opportunities for development and basically holds the place and the negotiating process so that the city isn't negotiating or having another potential developer enter into the negotiations outside of, kind of, they don't want someone to kind of, kind of come in and swoop the, the process. So it, it holds the, the process between the two parties for a period of time so that they can negotiate in good faith and make considerations. It doesn't bind you to anything, but it's a process that's very typical and common when you're looking at development. So basically, what has happened now that we have to go through the process of the Surplus Lands Act notification process, the, the ENA is basically on the back burner and the city has to go through the process of notification. And if there are other parties that want to potentially propose a project to the city, we have to make all those same considerations and negotiate in good faith. So it, it basically, the ENA is on hold until the city goes through this process. And through this process, the city could, could be presented with another opportunity for consideration. So this just opens that process back up.
Okay, so the, so the, basically, the exclusivity of this is just, is no at this point?
At this point, yes, until the city goes through the mandated state process.
But after that, does that become exclusive again, or it doesn't?
Um, the city would probably renegotiate the ENA because at that point, the timeframe would be up, so they would go back through that process. And it's, it's possible that, that Danco would just put in a, I would assume they would just put in a proposal. They are also on the list of people who can present proposals through HCD's process. So, so that's an option as well.
Okay. Is there any other question or comment from our public? Okay. Did you have a comment on this item?
No.
Okay. Um, I mean, again, I don't think we should be afraid of this project. I mean, let's not, let's keep our minds open to the possibilities of what can happen here. I know that since the city cleared out the, the area there, it's starting to look more like a park, a place where you can throw your crispy, you know, to your dog and that kind of thing. The intent of the opportunity zone was to open it up to development. And it's always been a place for business. Now we're just opening up to have residences above the businesses. So I, I don't think the town needs to be fearful of anything happening. We're not putting in some kind of, you know, 14-story mega hotel or something. It's going to be very well thought out. We have professionals working on this. Cash Gujo, the architect, has done some really beautiful developments around Humboldt County. And I have some real faith in, you know, what he's going to come up with. I've seen a few sketches already and they look really good. So I think we just need, need to keep an open mind about this. Anything else from council concerning this?
One quick.
Yeah.
Is the courtyard included into the, into the, you know, possible waste?
Into this, into this resolution?
It, so, yeah, so the courtyard did not get listed on this resolution. At the time, we had, we haven't really had any interest, but it would be something I think that the council, I would bring back to the council for consideration because we have had some questions about that property. And so we would need to go through the same process, but it's, it's, it's really, this is just a formality process. So, so we could bring it back at the December meeting and do the same. We would provide that notification.
And ultimately, the courtyard right now.
Yeah, and there's yeah, and I did talk to the attorneys about that because I'm not clear on what, I think any time the city is going to consider anything with city-owned property, you first have to go through this process. Whether you have something on it or not. So that was the, we didn't get the answer to that in time to make a revision to this, and I didn't want to muddy the waters. But it's a, now that we have the resolution template, it's a pretty easy process. So we could, we could definitely do that at the next meeting as well because that would have to be, that would have to be done.
So to, per determination from the lawyer that that is what could happen, even though it's being utilized already?
Yeah, because these properties were, were empty, they're undeveloped, and so, and the other ones not. We weren't really sure what the, that process.
Thank you for your question. Um, any other questions or concerns from public? Elise, your hand is still up. Did you want to make another comment?
I actually did. Um. So the land that we're talking about is everything west of Mondo Way that's not already occupied. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
City, oh, yeah.
That is city. Yeah.
Okay. And I, I just did want to comment again that I, I understand, Adeline, your comment that this shouldn't be threatening, but I think I know that I attended a meeting several months ago and I can't tell you exactly which one that was, but there seemed to be at that time an overwhelming opposition. There was quite a presence at that meeting of people that were opposed to entering into the negotiations with Danco. And the council at that time went ahead and voted to, to do that. And so, and I, I recall comments being made that there were people in support of the process and the project, but they weren't at the meeting voicing it. So it seemed like things were less, more negative, that, that public comment was more negative than it was positive. But that was, you know, that, that was not real, a realistic or an accurate portrayal there. But I think that a lot of people, myself included, walked away from that meeting feeling like we don't have a voice and that the council could go ahead and act affirmatively on something that, that the, that the members of the community really don't support. And so I want to just be clear about that, that that feel of being threatened is not about what may or may not happen in that, in that zone, but more about what the council, how the council may or may not reflect the desires of the community.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Um, all right, there's no other, other comments. Oh, yes. Fraser?
Scott Fraser, Blue Lake. So for the public's benefit, this map reflects what Elise just said. All of the undeveloped property is being made available for some unknown purpose or product at this time. So that's one deeply felt concern in the community. In the March meeting, I think it was March 21st, which Elise is referring to, people were suggesting things like, let's not develop the whole thing all at once. How about an incremental development process? So there are many good community ideas that were reflected, but the council chose to enter into the exclusive negotiating agreement, which your agenda packet for tonight was on to say, quote, for the sale of one of the city properties with Danco. And at many meetings, you, Mayor and others have mentioned they don't want to sell the property, but a public document distributed as recently as today is talking about actions that you took authorizing the sale of property. So those are the reasons why the community is concerned about not knowing for sure what we're going to end up with.
Thank you. So let's, the agenda does not say for sale to Danco.
The agenda report is in my hand.
No, no, for the agenda for tonight. Yeah.
For today, it was posted on your website today.
Okay.
And I'd like to read it to you again in its full text.
So did you read through the resolution, the modified resolution?
Yeah.
Okay.
We, that was at least, yeah, every, every place where it says sale or lease.
But my point is, I need to make very explicit point here. You, as a council, took action on March 21st, authorizing an exclusive negotiating agreement, an ENA, for the sale of property to Danco.
No.
Even, that's what this public document says. And if it's not correct, I suggest that you not adopt anything tonight until you have a chance to correct the things you're posting on your own website.
Well, what we have here tonight is correct. And every time that it says sale, in fact, that's the reason why we have this meeting tonight is to make sure that the words "or lease" were added to every single clause where it says sale. The council has made it very, very clear. We've gone through each one of them. We said, do you want to sell or lease? Do you want to sell or lease? And every one of us has said lease only.
Please consider moving the word sale with.
That's just in the agenda report. That's not in the resolution that they're considering.
It's a hoop that you have to jump through. You have to put the either/or there, but our, this council now does not want to sell that land. And it's not the entire piece of land either. Someone just said that. It's not.
And the resolution that you're considering tonight doesn't specify anything for Danco. It doesn't specify any breakout of acreage. This is just a notification process through the state that the city has undeveloped land. And every city has to go through this, and we're going to have to go through this every year to let people know that the city has undeveloped land and it could be considered for affordable housing development.
Pardon me, point of order. The resolution gives three specific parcel numbers, and those three parcels are the entirety
Absolutely.
of the undeveloped property.
Yes.
Which again, we don't know what's going to happen on one portion or all three, but you're taking actions tonight that would authorize the sale or lease of the entire property for one development if you choose.
Yes.
Well, it could be one developer or it could be three different developers, or it could be a multiple of developers. That part is none of that.
Right.
The resolution does not state any person that we're resolutions is just something that the state has said you need to do in order to move forward.
Or not move forward.
Or not.
We just have to do it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there any further questions or comments? Okay, um, the action item here is to approve resolution number 1191, declaring certain city-owned properties as non-exempt surplus land and no longer necessary for the city's use, and directing the city manager to follow procedures set forth in the Surplus Land Act with the government code as amended by Assembly Bill 1486 for the disposition of said surplus land.
I would motion, with the exception, taking out that no, and no longer necessary for the city's use. I would take out that part of the, the motion, but the rest. And that reflects basically what we have discussed in the resolution.
So you want the "and no longer necessary for the city's use"?
Which item was that?
So this is the recommended action that we're taking right now. And as it stands, we're going to, the motion stands as we will approve resolution 1191, declaring certain city-owned properties as non-exempt surplus land and directing the city manager to follow the procedure set forth in the Surplus Land Act Government Code 54220 as amended by Assembly Bill 1486 for the disposition of said surplus land. By Summer Doherty. We have a second.
I'll second that.
Second by Chris Curran. Is there any further discussion from council?
How are we differentiating between the, the final lease change?
Oh, so, yeah.
Should be updated.
Yeah.
Yeah. But that's not one within the packet.
No.
Okay. Oh, right. So I would amend it to say and add.
Do we need to officially write?
Yeah, that's good. Add lease to the second
page.
Second page first line.
Yes, that is on section three.
Okay. So we had tried to make sure that it said "and lease" at every one of the places that we had indicated last week, but there was one section or lease, sorry, or lease. And there was one section three where it was left out. So the amended motion is that we add or lease to section three as well. By Summer, second by Chris. Any further discussion from council? Any further discussion from public? Back to council for the vote, all's in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. It passes. All right, council correspondence. There is none, it looks like. Council, consent agenda, none. Reports of council and staff. Elaine was at the meeting this afternoon as well at 2:00. That was supposed to be the last traffic safety meeting that we've been going through. It's sort of an ad hoc group. There was a grant, start a process of exploring how to make traffic safety a priority in Humboldt County. Eureka especially has the problem of being a very high percentage of pedestrians getting killed or hurt. So it's, a lot of it's been motivated by the mayor of Eureka and the Eureka person, people in Eureka, city government, but the rest of us are trying to help out as well, as best as we can. So there will be a proclamation coming to all the cities talking about traffic safety. There's also a campaign of information. There's going to be some signs that are going to be put out and about. Information. There's gonna be some signs that are gonna be put out and about. Go slow, keep your eye on the road, at least eyes and um so there's, there's a lot of discussion about that. And now we're gonna be quarterly to kind of check in to see how the signage is going and how the um campaign is going for keeping us. Safe, so that was the meeting I attended. Any other reports from council?
Uh R C E A on Thursday, and uh there's another update on the Hatchery Road solar project. Um looks like they're gonna be able to work through the delays with their extremely delayed interconnection issues. Um so that will be operational in April twenty twenty.
You know, thank you for that because that that's been on my mind. I've been wondering about that.
It looks like uh they're gonna do upgrades to like the Blue Lake substation uh through this project, and so it'll open a lot more. Capacity for uh energy projects to our substation.
Exciting.
Yeah.
Okay, um thank you, Chris. Any other meetings?
I would now.
Uh Ben?
No.
Summer, uh let's see, the chamber didn't meet last month, but uh there's a something going around. For this month, for an open house at Walls and Hines on Friday the twelfth at six P M. Um music, wine, food.
It's a chamber mixer.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah.
What was it big on that?
Um November twelfth, Friday, November twelfth at six P M at Walls and Hines.
Yeah, six or six thirty.
Says six.
Six, okay.
Okay, sorry.
No, my, I know. No, I have six thirty. It's stuck in my head always when I hear a six. We have so many six thirty meetings.
Yeah. Um, yeah, I know. I I asked the president of the chamber, um Marvin Samuels, what were the COVID protocols for the mixer? Okay, and he said he didn't know. I asked if there was masking, if it was going to be outside, because there is gonna be food injury. Um and or if there was gonna be vaccination proof needed or something. And he didn't, he told me he didn't know that there was a phone number. Call, which I think is um Tom's number down there at Walls and Hines.
Is it a Blue Lake chamber mixer or?
It's a chamber mixer that's going out to everywhere, so it's Arcata, Eureka, you know.
But it's hosted by Blue Lake?
Yeah, okay. Hosted at Walls and Hines and Tom's house. Yeah. Specifically for businesses. It's interesting, but anyway, I was just curious about what you're into about that. Yeah, I encouraged you all ago. I won't know to make it, but yeah. Um yeah, the food is gonna be by Joe Mazzotti. Yeah. Um, anything else, Summer? Not too much to know, so it's okay. Um staff, anything we need to know about?
I don't think so.
Halloween went okay?
Yeah, Halloween was problems. Great. It, I think the town did wonderful and everyone was happy and we didn't run out of candy and. The school carnival went great. Um I worked the city hall um candy giveaway and then had to run up and sell tickets at the school and. So everyone helped each other out and yeah, I think it went really well. People were very happy.
Well, I had no trick or treaters on Sunday. None, not one. And I think part of the reason was, I think that the kids, especially little kids. Had everything on Friday. They had the school, they had the carnival, then they had this thing that was going on in town, which I saw when I came up from Yuma, was very well attended. And I think some of the parishes said, that's Halloween.
Sunday, though, we had hordes of kids come down our street.
Oh, you did?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we knocked on your door yet.
Whole like mob of them and then another little cluster and then another, and I just kind of went and looked around lots and.
I felt like it was more normal than, you know, the last year or so, so it felt good. Kids running around and the weather held and. Then it started raining, but it was like, at that point, it was time to cut it off.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right.
Yeah.
My um housemate is a Delaware student, and so she was a candy fairy. She was actually trying to dress as a Band-Aid with a fairy thing, and so she got on her bike because. She misses them. She just got home and all the kids went by, so she grabbed her purse, put all the candy in her bag, got on her bike and started riding around town like giving candy.
Super cute, super great. Okay, good. That's always good to know. Um anything else from staff?
So I don't have anything.
Okay. Uh future agenda items. We've already decided when our next meeting is. Kind of inviting. Uh our November and this summer meeting together. It's December tenth or something like that. I can't remember. Second Tuesday of the summer, where that is.
Yeah, yeah, December fourteenth.
Yeah, okay, six thirty. All right, um. Seeing as there is no other business, I would like a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion made by Summer Doherty, second by Chris Curran, to adjourn further discussion to public. Back to council. Voters say aye?
Aye.
Hi. Good night.
Elaine, Elaine, can you?
Yeah.
Could you hear it better this time?
Yeah, definitely, and I, we could hear the public comment too. I heard, I heard that gentleman um pretty well, so yeah, I I thought it worked well.
Okay, I'm gonna write down what the settings were.
Done the butt, yay!
Great.